So my comment is not really budget related specifically, but it does have elements of that in it, so I will just preempt my speech here. Good evening, board members. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Corey Lamaca and I'm the father of Katie Lamaca, sixth grader at Farnsworth Middle School. As a child that plays piano, violin, sings in chorus, has participated for many years in NISMAs festivals, and had roles in the High School Musical last year and Shrek this year, she's very involved with the music program here in Gilderlin. Without going into detail, I can tell you that music has had a profound effect on her academics, her social and emotional intelligence, and her level of confidence. I'm here tonight to speak about the music program and more specifically, the retirement of the current music director, Lori Hirschenhardt. I'll start out by saying I'm very happy for Lori and hope she enjoys a well-deserved break from her endless efforts of providing the best possible environment for students to not only be exposed to music at the elementary school level, but to thrive with it throughout their entire time here in the Gilderlin School District through middle school and high school. Lori is one of those people, like many others, that gives her entire being to the students in the district. I personally witnessed it each time. She is the first person at every musical event to get things organized and the last one to leave as she ensures that everything went according to plan. To say she will be sorely missed is a vast understatement. That being said, I did recently learn that you have recognized the gravity of the situation and are seeking candidates for a full-time administrative music position to replace Lori. To that, I say thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that this critical position needs to be refilled and that it is more than a full-time job. Thank you for realizing the importance and value of music in our children's lives and education. Most of all, thank you for continuing to support the music program for the current and future young musicians, as well as all the students and community members that benefit from it. There are a few things I hope you take into consideration when filling this position. Lori doesn't simply do her job while she's here, she lives it. She sets the overall vision of the music program. She devotes countless hours to things like coordinating the PEAK, which is Parents, Educator, and Kids Program, which ensures our youngest students are exposed to music by utilizing such things as an instrument petting zoo. She organizes the annual POPS concert, as well as the Faculty and Friends Recital, in which she not only emcees the event, but also performs a few pieces with the students. As a new member of the Gilderlin Music Parents and Friends Association, I had the pleasure of working with Lori on the POPS concert, and I can say I was truly amazed at her level of involvement before and during the event. From distributing tickets, to helping decorate, to answering the barrage of questions from those of us that were in attendance setting up for it, she did so with a level of calm and collectedness that is to be commended and admired. Please note that these examples are only a fraction of the items Lori is responsible for. She elevates the status of the music program beyond what our individually talented and dedicated teachers are able to on their own. She is a passionate advocate for our music programs and continuously seeks out broader ensemble opportunities for our students to showcase their talents. Due to her efforts and those of the team of very talented and dedicated music teachers that she leads, Gilderlin has a reputation for excellence in music within the capital region, as well as the rest of New York State. I implore you to find someone that shares Lori's passion for music and dedication to our students and community that will continue to move our music programs forward. I thank you very much for your time and your continued support of the music program here in Gilderlin. Thank you.
Thank you. So just in terms of the structure of this evening's meeting, what we're going to do is give the board an opportunity to ask questions about the budget, and then give the board an opportunity to ask questions about the capital project, and then I'll turn it over to those in attendance and they can have the opportunity to ask questions about the budget and the capital project. Does that sound okay? Okay, so we'll do as we've done in the past, kind of go around, person to person. Does somebody want to start? Questions on the budget? Are there any questions on the budget?
Do you prefer the public go first?
Sure, it doesn't matter. I mean, I have some questions.
Okay, Judy, go ahead.
There are just a couple. First of all, the budget seems to be well crafted. I don't find a lot of problems with it. But one of the things I wondered for Lynn is if you were able, and I couldn't tell by looking at the individual pages, to find money for more permanent subs. You know, that was one of the things that I had suggested, that maybe we could get some in the other schools. Is that in the budget?
I don't think an administrator recommended that.
Okay, okay. Another thing, Neil, how much is the current fund balance and how much is anticipated for next year?
Current fund balance, off the top of my head here, is $12 million.
Okay.
They don't have the information. Wouldn't you provide that information every month to the board in terms of current estimates?
Okay, I was just looking at Appendix P, and it said we were taking some from the fund balance, and I didn't, you know, I wanted to make sure we still had the...
Yes, we have adequate fund balance.
And still have a good fund balance carrying over. Okay, I thought we did. I didn't think we were going into it. And I don't know, Damian or whoever, again, I was going through the appendices, and I wondered, the self-contained enrollment figures are absolutely constant for the next while. Is that, that's in Appendix A, and they are at, you know, they don't change at all, and I just wondered if that's just for bookkeeping.
You're the self-contained?
Yeah, over at the end, where it says...
I do those projections going forward?
Yeah, the projections going forward.
Yeah, basically, we're carrying what we currently have forward. This is of enrollment projections.
Okay, because the other projections, I know you...
Yeah, we have better data. It's such a small population, a unique population, so, and it changes over time, as you can see from the history, so we consider our best information going forward is current year information.
Okay, and yeah, that's what I figured. I mean, it is a big expense if we were suddenly more.
Right, it's very hard population, just the small size of it to project, and it's spread across the district at three levels.
Right. I figured that was it, but because it's such a big expense, I wondered if that was it. Okay, let me see. I just have a question. On Appendix D, it talks about supplies for the principal. They have a per pupil allocation, and what is that money?
That's for general supplies for the office, typically, for the running of the office.
Okay, and is the amount for paper decreasing with increased reliance on community? Somebody said something about it one time, but with, you know, with the computer communications. Is our paper budget going down?
It has gone down, yes.
Okay, and this is one, and I'm just wondering, because I know something about this, or about working in it. When we start the new math program, is that going to take a lot of money, and does that show up as a new expense, or is that, will that be in the next budget year?
That's in the 1920 budget proposal. So that was, Marie shared that with the presentation last week.
Right, okay.
So there is a...
Yeah, I remember that there was some money.
Yeah.
Okay, but that'll be not this year's budget?
Next year, the 1920, yeah.
Okay, let's see. And P, and I don't remember what this, and I have services, other districts, and governments, and I'll have to look to see what P is, because my note doesn't make any sense. Where we have money, I think it just says services, other districts, and governments, about halfway down.
Yeah, that's revenue that we collect for things, like BOCs provides, or what, summer school, we have town programs, we have, what else is in there? Let me see if I can look up...
Okay, I just want, you know, but it's income.
Right, it's income, well, there's an example, we rent to the Y for after-school care programs.
Okay, and that's included in this place? Okay, all right, I think...
I think childcare would have been in there.
Yeah, okay, those were my questions. Thank you. They aren't necessarily money, they were just understanding what some of the things were.
Sure. Next, Seema?
I just have one question about the money that's for middle school and high school science labs. Is, so is it enough to change or transform both to they're adequate, or is it just, because I feel like we've focused on middle school, and then more recently, we've just heard about high school. So I wasn't sure if what was budgeted for that can actually impact both, what they need to be.
So in terms of the middle school, there's no expenditures in the regular operating budget for middle school next year, so the, any conversation around the labs at the middle school would be connected to our capital project. So I don't know if we want to hold on that till we get to that part.
Okay. But we are doing the high school in the regular budget?
The high school labs are in the capital proposal.
Oh, it's the capital, not the regular budget?
Yes.
Okay, I have one more question.
Sure.
At the end of every year of the budget, we always seem to have, like, come up with some extra money for something, so I'm wondering, like, what are the plans for that? What are your recommendations, or what's that contingency plan?
So last week, when we were together, I think I had four things on that list. One was, we had a request from our elementary principals and Special Education Department to expand the training that we provide to special education teachers for something called literacy lessons. And this develops the skills and abilities of our special ed teachers to work directly with reading instruction with students. There was a question in there about whether or not we would consider adding additional Tech Valley high school slots. There are some small equipment requests from the middle and high school that did not make it into the original budget. I believe it was cafeteria tables at the middle school and classroom, standard, regular, basic classroom furniture at the high school. And then the last one, I think if we did indeed get some additional aid, we might revisit the amount that we have used from our fund balance as a revenue source. Those were the four kind of ideas to think about. There's certainly open to others. I just received about 20 minutes ago a text from Pat Fahey, and they're in the middle of negotiations, and things are going well, but, you know, you can't count on that till it's done.
Was that additional cafeteria tables?
Replacement.
Others, Tim?
So we can do questions, and can we just do comments?
Of course.
Okay, so just to start off with a question. In the PowerPoint last week, there was a line about how student attendance rates remain very high at the high school, 96% plus. But then I thought there's been recent discussion of how there's been a spike in absenteeism at the high school. So I'm kind of confused as to what the story is and what impact, you know, this can have or can't have on state aid based on, you know, number of pupils at school.
The attendance report data came from our State of the District presentation that we did back in January, and our attendance, aside from this week when everyone has the flu, is actually generally quite high, and it has, you know, been stable at the 96%. And we shared that data point just to indicate that we've made a significant change to how we've structured some of our classrooms, and students aren't staying away, they're still coming to school. So I'm not sure about the spike in tardies unless that's, I'm not sure where that came from. Can you remember the context from it?
I'm hearing that it was discussed at a high school faculty meeting, and that it was termed a spike in absenteeism.
I'm not aware of that.
Discussion of what to do about that.
Well, we do have, under ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, the state plan has some far more rigorous indicators of attendance rates and chronic absenteeism, particularly around, you know, students who, and actually families who struggle to have their students meet those benchmarks. And anything more than 10% of absenteeism is considered chronic absenteeism, so that's 18 days of school. So we probably do have some families, and I'm looking at Mike here since this came up at the high school faculty meeting, where students, we do have some students who are meeting that benchmark. But it's a small number of students, is my suspicion, and I see Mike coming this way, so I'm going to not guess at what happened in a meeting that I wasn't at.
We were, at the faculty meeting, we were talking about chronic absenteeism and the way the state is going to use that as a metric. We never talked about a spike in attendance, it's just we were talking about the way the data's being captured is different now, and we have to look at, and if it's over 10% of the instructional days, that poses the category of chronic absenteeism, and we're going to have to really be cognizant of that, and we're discussing at the district level of consistent attendance policies of how we're going to address that. So that's what the context of the conversation was. It was about the new ESSA accountability standards that we're going to be using.
Okay. So is there any way to put like a dollar amount on that? What do you use, lose per pupil?
Well, it's an average attendance, it's an average daily attendance measure that goes through both semesters. Historically, it's been very, very close each and every year. It doesn't vary by a lot. So we're right about that 96% range that Marie asked, little above, little below, we're right in the ballpark every single year.
Okay. And I've got a lot of notes, but I'll try to keep it short. Again, I went back to my notes from August, and at that time, I wrote how I'm a worrier, and I'm still a worrier, and I'm more worried, and I'm just really struggling with all of the money amounts that we're looking at. And I'm going to assume if I'm struggling with it, there's going to be an element of the public that's struggling with it, and I think we saw that in October. Back in August, I was concerned with sticker shock on the 40-plus, at that time, million-dollar building project, so now that it's down to 30.7 million, I think that's a great move in a better direction. What I'm struggling with, though, is that the entire ballot is still going to be $100 million-plus budget, 30.7 million-dollar bond, $8 million library project, $1 million transportation bond. We're almost back where we started, so that just gives me pause. And again, I'm worried. I'm just worried about that. And I think when you look at, again, some of these points I ticked off back in August and again in October, but I'll go through them again, that when you look at the state as a whole right now, you know, we're going to have to keep up pace with these minimum wage hikes, and we've talked about that, and I think we've already made progress on that, from what I've heard. But I worry about, you know, Fight for 15 is going to become the tussle for 20 or 25 dollars an hour. I don't think that's a big prediction that's going to happen. I think that's very easy to see. We're already seeing now what one-party rule does in New York State, and, you know, there's this saying about how when New York City gets a cold, upstate New York gets the flu or pneumonia. Well, you know, we're seeing New York City right now wants to give away everything free, 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 and free is great until you have to start paying for it. So what happens when New York City gets the flu or pneumonia? I'm afraid upstate New York is going to end up on life support, and I don't see how we're ever going to be able to make ends meet, and you just can't continue to tax and spend. It's going to be unsustainable, so I'm desperately worried about that. We've seen three years of surpluses in Gilderlin at about $7.4 million. I think we've agreed on that figure over the past three years. I assume we're looking at a surplus again this year. I don't know how you translate that to the voter that keeps seeing that happening and then sees more and more tax and spend. I'm very concerned about the tax assessment issue, although I think that was addressed brilliantly in the PowerPoint from last week, but I'm still concerned about it, as, you know, everybody in Gilderlin is getting letters that show, again, big numbers, big swings, tens of thousands of dollars. And I think the grievance day surrounding the tax assessment is the week after the budget vote in May, so this is going to be in the psyche of the voters. You know, so some of those things were from back in August and October. Now, I'm worried that we have, you know, 11 bargaining units that were almost, you know, we don't have to look at them all at once, but we always have a handful of them that we're looking at as a board, and they're all, you know, rightly so, they're looking for fair compensation, so we have to build that into the next couple of years. We see articles about new apartment complex projects that are proposed, that could have a significant impact on our building space and staffing and class size issues in the next couple of years. That's something we need to start thinking about right now. I know that in one of the slides in a PowerPoint we've seen recently, there was talk of that $2.3 billion shortfall in revenue for the state, and that was just for an early two months. We haven't even seen February and March yet. And the governor himself said that this was serious as a heart attack, and the governor himself, who often says tax the rich, said you can tax the rich and tax the rich, but what happens when the rich leave? Then what do you do? And so I'm very worried about the atmosphere of the state and how that's going to impact us locally. I know back in August or October, I talked about an article by E.J. McMahon from the Empire Center that shows declining enrollments across the state. Back to, I think it was back to like levels of 1973. Our state is hemorrhaging, it's losing population. You know, if you just take the politics of fracking out of the equation, we've lost 10 years of revenue from fracking that could have been going to school districts across the state. If you look at, you know, again, take politics out and just look at the numbers and the economics, the loss of the Amazon plant downstate, 25,000 jobs, huge potential revenue loss, that again, could have helped all across the state. So I just am very worried, very, very worried about this tax and spend mentality, and that it's going to be unsustainable over time, and I'd hate to see it impact our district a couple of years from now in terms of having to make, you know, deep, sharp cuts, when maybe we could be nibbling around the edges now to save ourselves a little, you know, greater pain later. I have some other comments on safety and security as it applies to the building project, but I'll wait and save those if that comes up.
Okay. Great, thank you. Barbara?
I had a question that I asked Maria about. In her presentation, she had mentioned that she didn't want to put anything into the budget that might not be sustainable, you know, in the future. And she particularly pointed out that our summer school, I think special ed principal was on a grant, and now it's coming out of our budget next year. And yet, the teacher leaders that are being proposed for, I think, about $59,000 with a savings of 17, again, is a grant-type situation. So I'm just wondering why we're putting that in, which is a grant, that may not be sustainable, and particularly, I asked her about the social services, why a dog therapy program? He's a teacher leader coordinator, but I'd be glad to, you know, to hear.
I'll start with a grant question. So the first thing I should point out, and probably should have said last week, is these are not competitive grants that we're using the funding for, for both the teacher leader positions and the summer school principal. They are, what they're called, they're categorical aid, so we get that grant money every single year. What's changed for both of those categories is the rules about what you can spend those resources on. In the summer school principal, we were informed that we are not allowed to pay the summer school principal, this is for our special education students, out of this, it's the 611 or 69, 611 grant. So once being told we're not allowed to do this, we are certainly not going to be doing it. So we'll put other expenses in the grant that are allowable, and it'll offset, so it's just a which pocket does it come out of kind of thing, but we wanted to make sure we followed the rules. As for the teacher leaders, that will come out of Title II funding, that's also categorical aid that we don't compete for, we have to apply for it, but we don't compete for it. And you'll recall that in the January State of the District presentation, and then I hit a couple of the highlights last week, because of the new federal laws, ESSA, the expectations for how school districts spend their Title II money has changed. And it shifted more away from one-time, kind of standalone professional development to more hands-on, job-embedded, real-time, classroom-based. That's the kind of work that we do best through a coaching model or through teacher leaders who are, you know, not consultants who come for a day and then drive away, but who are part and parcel of our day-to-day professional development. So with the shift in that expectation from ESSA, we looked at it as a tremendous opportunity to bring back the teacher leader positions that we ended up eliminating five or six years ago now, when we were at a terrible budget place, and expanding a bit in order to make sure we're covering not just the core courses, but, you know, all the content areas that are valuable for our staff. So I'll stop there before we get to the service dog piece, and Damian, this is your world, you want anything that I've missed or could have said?
You summed it up very well. I think the, again, the definition of what's acceptable for professional development under ESSA has changed from the old No Child Left Behind language. Marie pointed out that formerly, under No Child Left Behind, the professional development dollars were intended to focus solely on core subject areas. That's expanded now, so it includes things like world languages, cultures, art, music, et cetera. It's an acceptable expenditure under the grant, where formerly, it was not exactly acceptable expenditure, but it is now. Some other acceptable things came out of the grant language, so we're taking advantage of that and hopefully complying with what's required under ESSA.
So back to the therapy dog question. Ironically, long before we knew about the changing of the ESSA requirements, we were, this is months ago, we were actually making a plan to propose as part of the regular budget, a leader position for the therapy dog program, which has grown from one dog to six, and there is a tremendous amount of coordination that happens around the training, the certification, keeping track of immunizations, the distribution of materials. There's a ton that happens there, and we really don't have a person who is in charge of doing that, so it has fallen in bits and pieces to all different kinds of people, like Cliff has been involved, and Linda Livingston has been involved, and Neil, and Catherine Machete has done some work. And part of that diffusion of not having a single point person to really coordinate is that things fall through the cracks, and the idea was if we have a position where someone is watching it and growing it and nurturing it, you know, it can flourish, continue to flourish. So actually, ironically... So, actually, ironically, the work has fallen under Lisa Knowles because Catherine Rochetti reports to Lisa Knowles. So, Lisa actually drafted a job description that's a page and a half long of duties and responsibilities, a page which I thought I brought with me in my many stacks here, but apparently did not. So, I'm happy to share that draft job description with the board, I can put it in the Friday memo if you'd like to see it.
I guess just a follow-up question. Would that not be a job that a secretarial person could do versus a teacher at a teacher's salary?
Well, it's stipended amount from the GTA contract, and it's about $2,700 for step one, I'm looking at, I just looked at this in the contract. So, it's not really a teacher's salary piece, but it is a stipended amount that is in the teacher's contract. I don't know if it's a clerical position, there are clerical elements to it for sure, but I would say the bigger role is really working with the handlers, who are the teachers, who have the dogs, and then the secondary handlers to get the training and to, you know, that ongoing work to bring the dogs up to speed in terms of their roles. It's very involved, I had no idea. I have quite a bit of an idea now, but there's a lot to it, and a lot of it has to do with really knowing how to tap into the expertise of the dog, but also to develop it as well.
Now, would the Title II funding allow you to use the funds for more literacy coaches in the other elementary schools where you had such a successful, you know, reported effect at Lynnwood?
I'm going to let Damian jump into this because we're in the middle of the training.
It already is, that's a large part of how we funded the training for the two literacy coaches who are at work, they actually have been working all this week with the literacy teams at our elementary school, so that's been largely funded by Title II, that will continue as well into next year.
Teresa?
Can I ask Neil one more time with regards to the tax rate? I was going over a few nights ago, Appendix Q, and I just wanted to know if you could explain a little bit more so regarding the tax rate on the full value. I know that we were at $23, $23.31 or $32.01 per thousand is what we currently are at, and we're going, just so I understand this, are we going now to an $18 with the full valuation? 18, 20?
Well, we haven't officially got all of the assessment information to know exactly where we're going.
Right, to know where we would be.
But I do have a few slides if we want to talk conceptually about the reassessment again.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, they're awesome, that's very helpful.
It's a lot of like what ifs, we don't really know what it'll be.
Just going out of model somewhat on the presentation at a board meeting, but we've got some other information to share as well, and we've worked the charts a little bit to take into account the most recent information that came out to residents in the form of a newsletter from the town in terms of what the rates might have looked like if the revaluation of new reassessments had been in place for 2018, the last tax year. So, really, what we have here is this chart that's updated a little bit, now showing $16, I'll walk through it again. So, in 2018, and this is what actually happened last year for taxes, the percent of full value for the county of Gilderlin was 77.9%, that's what we refer to as the equalization rate, and after the right reassessment, it'll be at 100%, so every house will be at its full market value, so that was a 22.1% change. In terms of the school tax rate, we're currently, in the school year, $23.03. The prediction is for the town is that that would drop to $16.18 based on the new townwide reassessed values, with about $6.85,000 in the thousand, about 300,000. So, if we took a home that was valued at $250,000, and that's after the, that's before the reassessment, in 2018, they received a school tax bill of $5,758, that same home valued at $250,000, utilizing the $16.18 rate, would have dropped to $4,040, that would be reduction of 74,000. That's just showing you the impact of having a broader tax base, which ultimately lowers the tax rate, and if the assessments stayed the same, there would be a reduction in taxes. So, the question is, with the reassessment, some houses stayed the same, some went up, some might have gone down, so you have a variety of factors that could be up like. But if we looked at the tax rate that the town had supplied and applied it to the scenario that we have here, the, for example, a $250,000 home, that home could be reassessed up to 42% higher, another $106,000 before exceeding the 2018 tax bill at the $16 instead of the $20 rate. So, there's, the magic number here is 42%. So, if your assessment increased by 42%, you'd be paying the same amount of taxes. If it were less, you'd actually have a reduction. If it's one of the 42%, there would be an increase, but it would be an increase off of 42%. So, from 42 to 48%, you're not going to have a large shift in your tax bill. About 42% is the tax number, so, again, it's a function, trying to explain this, it's a function of just having a broader tax base, so if you have more tax assessed property, we have a tax levy amount of money that we need to raise from property owners, about $72 million. So, taking that $72 million while spreading it across the broader tax base, back tax base, will lower the tax rate per thousand of assessed property.
Can you tell me if that, I'm sorry, can you tell me if that $16 figure, is that where we, you can't tell me that's where we will be, but it should be?
Close to that.
It should be close?
Yes.
And we won't know that until?
Right. So, this is just for the towns, the town has estimated that, of the overall increased assessed value for the town. As a school district, we have four towns in total, so part of the calculation for the tax levy is to assess that across the four taxing entities, that line, Scotland Max, and Gilderlin. So, part of the process that we have to use is we have to determine proportionate shares. So, out of our overall tax levy, the majority always goes to Gilderlin, that's in the 90% range, at lesser amounts, about 6% for the 100, and lesser amounts for the 100, but so we need that total assessed value, we need to compute that against our tax levy, we need to proportion that across the four towns in order to be able to come up with a true tax rate for our budget, which we have to finalize as well.
Okay.
But it should be close to what the town is estimating in terms of the county of Gilderlin.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just to go on, so, I wanted to try to give everybody a tool that they can calculate their own reassessment, so if you take your new assessed value divided by 1,000 and multiply it by the town's estimated school tax rates, that will tell you what your tax bill will be for school. You can do the same thing with a library, the rate is less, but you see assessed value. You can get that total, and then you can look at your tax bill for 2018, and you get a sense as to the impact or the difference between those two numbers. It's important to note, we looked at the tax bill, there is a section that shows your total without the star savings, and that's the one you want to look at, not the one with the star savings. You can take that methodology, cross it out, come up with the total for school and library, compare it to your school and library totals that you have on your tax bill. And then we came up with a few examples just to show you how the formula might work, we're also going to try to get the device rate from there. So, your reassessed value was $100,000, your tax rate was 1,000, $16.80, that translates easily to $1,618 for school, $700 for libraries, you get about $1,700. There's a $300,000 example, a $500,000 example. The formula works exactly the same. Whatever your assessed value is, divided by 1,000, multiplied by the tax rate, and it'll be your total. Easy way for you to gauge what your tax bill was from last year and what it would look like in that new assessed value. That's that.
Let me ask another question regarding the reassessment. If somebody is fighting their reassessment, how does that affect what, when will we know what we'll be getting at that point as a district if somebody's coming to the town? After we've passed the budget, they're going to go to the town and say, "This is not what my house is worth."
Well, we do have money in the budget for tax refunds.
Okay.
Those are finalized before we get to that point. So, there is a period where people can contest their assessments before we get to the final tax rolls. Again, we're working in August in terms of final tax rolls, in terms of that period of...
But because we're having a reassessment, we're probably, there's going to be a larger number of people that are going to be contesting their assessments versus the day-to-day, every year, people moving into the district.
Yeah, so, in the budget for next year, I don't know if you remember it now, but we currently have about $100,000 in there that we got for tax refunds, tax challenges, $300,000 in the budget, $1,200,000. We went back to 2004, 2005, the last reassessment, and in 2004, we came out about $28,000.
Okay.
The following year was over 100, so it's about three times as much.
Wow.
So, we're using that same model going forward, assuming that in a regular year, if we're about $100,000, that history holds true, will be about three times as much, so we accommodate that in the budget.
We should be okay.
And there's a little tail to that in the following years as well, so someone turned it into the following year, a hundred bucks were actually issued, so we'll probably count it. It was a lesser amount, I think it was about $90,000 in 2005, compared to 28,000 two years before, and that dropped back down again, so we just go back to about $29,000 the following year, so there was a two-year bubble of tax refund.
Okay. I have a couple other ones, but I don't know if anybody else has any. I was going through what we had gotten last week, there was athletic admissions, and I think I've brought this up before, but is it typical for districts to roll over athletic admissions just into the general budget, or is there a way to actually be able to put that back into the athletic, it's only, it's 16,500 total, is there any way to put that back into an athletic department?
Well, I would say, you know, part of it's revenue, so we have to count revenue as revenue, we can't do that. So, I think indirectly, it is supporting, so we have revenue coming in that helps support the tax levy in terms of what we need for property taxes, so that revenue is offsetting expense. There's not a one-to-one correlation, obviously, but as we have expenses for physical education, we also have revenue coming in on the other side, but we have to reckon nicely that's revenue.
Okay. The only, I had a couple other issues, and just that, I'm hoping that there won't be an issue with the Wi-Fi connections that we have at the schools, that I don't recall, that was in the Capital Project, but then we, did we take that out? I thought we did. The advancing in the, I know that we had issues with all the electronics that we have now with the one-to-one ratio that we have.
That's all been resolved already.
So, it's all?
Yeah, that, the Wi-Fi wasn't the primary focus of what was in the Capital Project for technology.
Yes, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't the primary focus of it, it was more infrastructure backbone of the technology.
Okay.
So, it shouldn't have an impact going forward with the Capital Project. Most of what we've done with Wi-Fi at this point, we've been able to do through smart schools.
Okay.
So, we're in good shape.
Good. And then I just had notes of the labs and the class size, I just wanted to make sure, I know that we always come across this, it seems, since I've been on the board anyway regarding class size, we seem to be on par with what it should be going, I mean, I know we don't really know anything until the very end, usually August going into September, that we really know what the actual numbers are per class, but I just want to really emphasize that I really hope that we do use whatever extra monies that we have to put towards teachers if necessary, and that we don't have large classes, because I think that's always been the issue, is that we don't have, we have guidelines, and a lot of times those guidelines, they are just guidelines, but I think maybe we need to somehow adjust them if they do get to a higher point for the lower grades. More so, I think, is an issue for the younger elementary age levels than the middle school and high, but, and labs, I know we just discussed that before, but I really hope that we can do something with the labs in both the middle school and the high school, I think it's really important, they're antiquated and they need to be up to date if we're going to be all about STEM and so forth, but that was what I had.
Gloria?
I have to unmute it, if you can't hear me too good, just let me know, I'll have to send my comments in in another way. Just a couple of comments, thank you for the explanation about the funding for the summer school principal and the teacher leader, that really helped a great deal, knowing how they're going to get funded, and I'm very supportive of reinstating those teacher leaders, I think they were a great loss to us, and I'm very happy to see them in the budget again. Also, my impression from looking through the budget is that I believe it does reflect that the district really respects the community, that has a clear understanding that there is a financial drain on people and a strain on people right now, because I think the budget really held the community in respect in that age by just kind of moving ahead where we needed to move ahead, holding the line on certain things that are important, but also, the second most important thing is we, you know, we have responsibility to our students, to provide them the best educational opportunities, and I think the budget moves in a positive direction there, but also respects the fact that we can't do everything we'd like to do, but we're doing what we can, knowing that our community also is undergoing a lot of financial stress at this time as well.
Thank you, Gloria. Shaun, we're going around asking budget questions now, and then we'll do Capital Project, so...
All right, thank you. I was listening in on YouTube on the way here, so I was able to catch all that, so that's a fantastic service we've got. I do have some questions, because as I went through the budget, identified about 1.3, almost 1.4 million dollars in questions, and I think because it was close to what we're asking for an increase, I just wanted to go through those, and some may seem small, and others are quite large, but let me start, I guess, probably the bigger number, and it's more of a point of just clarification for the public as to why we're going in this direction, but private school transportation, we're increasing by $677,000 next year.
Yes.
Yeah, can you just talk a little, just 30-second blurb as to why we're going in that direction?
Sure, well, actually, we are in that direction in the current year, and we had to make some adjustments this year. Couple of issues that have come up, there's the driver shortage, which we've talked about before, we just can't recruit, attract, and retain the number of rush drivers that we need. Secondary piece is, we are going to a lot of places, so between our in-district schools, programs that we have, School to Work is one where we get our students with disabilities out in the community, we'd like to be able to do that. There are some runs, charter schools, we have to take care of the non-publics, we have to take care of special education placements, tend to be spread out depending on the needs of the child, so the program has to fit the child's need, and then it's a matter of where they're located. So, we are going in a lot of different directions, we're going as far away as Massachusetts in terms of transporting a particular student, but we're going to Runcular County, we're going west, east, north, and south, we've been able to partner with a couple of school districts that if we have kids on the way, we're doing that arrangement as well, but again, all in all, just in the magnitude of the number of locations that we have to be at within the relative same time span, we're looking at, you know, can we get to certain pockets of Albany, Troy, Latham, Schenectady, and meet our obligations for stove?
and meet our obligations for still for after-school activities, sports, and all of those other activities? So, we really had to resort to trying to find a more efficient way to do that, and private contractors can offer a more efficient way to do that. We have to tag everything to a route and still get people to the same place in relatively the same amount of time. Contractor, if they're already transporting students with disabilities, if they're already going to a location and can get a student in our district and bring them there, it does relieve some issues for us in trying to make all of those connections to get kids where they need to be on time. Well, ultimately, in many cases, result in a shorter bus ride for some students than they might have otherwise, because we will have to traverse a larger geographic area. So, it's become partly out of necessity, but also it's a geographic shift in terms of where kids are located.
So, we're trying to use shared out-of-district routes when possible?
Yes, oh yes.
Okay, to minimize that?
Doing that on a number of occasions with other school districts. We're helping other school districts, they're helping us to the extent that we can make it work.
That takes the big dent out.
How many schools, Neil, do we transport to?
Oh, I think it's 65 different schools throughout the...
I thought it was in the 60s, yeah.
Yes.
People should know that, too. I'm sorry, Shaun, I just, it is a lot.
Yes.
I mean, when you say a lot, I might think 20 or 30, but 65 is a lot of schools.
And I wonder if you can share with the board the breakdown of numbers of students that we're caring for that are going elsewhere? So, and I don't, I don't need to know right now, but just for our information, what that is and, you know, who's selecting private schools, because I'm curious as to who's not choosing our schools. And some of those are different, because some students have specific needs that we can't address adequately, so, thank you. The increase in tuition for summer schools, about $350,000 next year. Just wondering about why we have such a...
Which line are we looking at?
Let me dig it up here.
Should be an additional $16,590, unless there's some other things in that line.
My notes did not write the line down, so just bear with me while I...
Page 26 is a situation.
Nope.
Sorry.
All right, well, I'll circle, uh, let's see. I'm sorry, it was tuition, regular, and summer school for private school placements, so 2250, object 470.
Oh, special ed, that's special education.
Okay, that's our special ed. Okay, and so that's what we're talking about, too, in terms of other services out of the district.
Correct. So, these are students that are in private placement, students with disabilities. So, we, basically, there's two placement options, BOCs, oh, three, actually. We have some in-district programs. We have some students attending BOCs programs, and then we have some students in what are called private placements that are not run by a BOCs, an outside provider. So, those are the ones that are outside providers that were probably in the 16, 17, 18 students that attend those types of programs. Massachusetts one would be one example.
Okay, and that's a pretty predictable number. We know that's going to be reliable, or is that, we're sort of trying to figure that out?
What we, we work with Lisa Knowles and Megan Kelly over there, work with them on trying, on tracking the students. So, where's their current placement? They have to go through annual review meetings in the spring to see what is the best program placement based on the student's needs. So, it can change. What we find a lot, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a lot of transition in placements between BOCs placements and private placements in terms of the student population. So, we do have children entering and leaving the program, or maybe their placement changes. So, what we find a lot is sometimes students are going from BOCs programs to private placements. It can work in reverse, or students coming back to in-district programs or out-of-in-district programs to one of the other programs. So, oftentimes, we might have a shift in dollars, particularly between special ed and private placements. It just depends on the best placement for the child in a given year, given their needs. But there is some transition between those two placement options.
Okay. Working down my list here, there are, well, I'm looking at the allocates, and now I'm below the six-digit figures, and now I'm into the fives. When you mentioned the refund of real property tax, I think that's probably responsible to put in, because we don't know what's going to happen with challenges. So, I don't have an issue with that, because it's something out of our control, but I'd rather be proactive in budgeting for that. The others are, I'll group two of them together, is about $65,000 or so. And data processing equipment, that's $16,000, and then data processing funds for BOCs, so that's $49,000. So, together, about $65,000. What's going on there, why we're seeing a bump?
Which code are you looking at? The 1680? There are a couple of things going on there, but there is pretty much an even offset if I'm looking at what you're thinking.
Data processing, 1680, object 200, and then object 490.
Okay, so 490, that's the BOCs code for data processing. So, those are BOCs services that we would be containing. The 200 code, that's the data processing equipment. We have a reduction of console cabling in 2630, that's a reduction of $36,000. That's offsetting that $16,000 for the data processing equipment. And then we also have an adjustment in the title and the training for one of our computer technicians to a civil service network technician. So, those two expenditures combined are a total of $36,000, which is evenly offset from the 2630, 449, 40.
Okay. So, there's a swap there for us. There's $20,000 in safety and security here. Let's see, 1621, object 458 on page eight. That's a new, that's a new item in here. We haven't seen that before.
Not new money, Shaun, just a new code.
Okay.
And we really did it for tracking. We carried some of that money in, we call other services code, and you'll see, look, there's a transfer. I transferred most of that over, asked Neil if we could create a new code, and it's just a, it's really to help us track what we're spending. It provided the DOT, a year and a half's worth of data during budget presentations of what we've spent on various safety and security components, whether that's radios, cameras, door locks, et cetera.
So, if I were to look over to 1620, other services, that decrease of 16.5 eats up?
That's a portion of it, yep.
That's a portion of it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And, like I said, I'm working down mine. I have a couple others that I think are minor, but, you know, I sort of, if you're going to tighten a purse string, you look at your own wallet first. And, again, it may seem inconsequential, but we're adding an additional $2,500 to the Board of Education for conferences. I, you know, again, if we're looking to tighten things up, I don't want to add anything additional to what we're doing. If I have to attend something, I'll figure out a way to handle that. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. I see Ben. Ben, do you have any questions or comments?
So, my first one is, what I hope it's a typo. Under technology, their conference budget went from, I think, $1,700 to $17,000.
Where are you looking, Ben?
Computer-assisted instruction, item 2630, 406. Travel slash conferences. Page 30.
I'm thinking that's a typo. We'll double-check on that, but I'm quite certain that's a typo. There wasn't an increase proposed for that, so... Oh, actually, wait a minute. No, 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 no. Let me back up a little bit. That actually ties to the question that Shaun asked. There is an increase in that, and it goes back to what I said earlier about one of our computer technicians changing civil service title to a network technician. So, that comes from that offset from the 2630, whichever code I rattled off earlier. The 2630, 449, where you'll see a $36,000 reduction, which is, it's right beneath the one that you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, so $16,000 of that is to address the civil service shift and the training associated with that, so that goes into the travel conference for that. So, it's an offset, not an increase.
So, my next question, payment in lieu of taxes, our appendix P says that that's going to go up significantly next year. But, Neil, didn't I hear you say something about how you expect that not to be, that to be challenged? Do we really want to depend on this number?
We really don't have a choice at this point. That's what the assessment is, and we would be guessing at anything else if it is challenged. And we don't know if it'll be challenged, but if it is challenged, census commercial property, those typically take longer to resolve than residential property owners. So, typically, we would be looking beyond a year before we would know if that would change or not. They typically take longer than a year.
How do we pick the, so every year, we take a certain amount of money from the fund balance, and we add it in to kind of offset taxes. How do we decide on that number, and why is it so automatic?
Well, the board actually decides on that number. That number has grown over the last several years. We used to be at $300,000, we're now at $49,500. It was 6.05 before that, so it has grown over time. It's a conversation that we have with the board whenever we do the budget, and how much of that are we going to appropriate in terms of revenue? The issue with that is, once it's in, it becomes harder to take away. So, once we're using that as another source of revenue, to back away from that and have less revenue would also mean that we would have to also have less expenses if we were to reduce that, so... The issue with adjusting that particular number.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's what I got. I asked some questions last time.
Ben? Okay, I have a few questions. And this first one is kind of a general question. I know that it's been asked in years past, so just as a refresher for myself. Every year, why do we create the budget based on a rollover budget as opposed to what is actually spent the year before?
Because things change from year to year. So, in terms of the rollover budget, we do that in the fall, when we're only a few months into the school year. That gives us a barometer of what might happen going into the future, but it's an early indicator of things that we know and a lot of things that we don't know and are roughly estimating at that time. When we do the actual development of budget, we are using better data than we would with other budgets. So, we're using actual people and where they are moving along in terms of their salaries. So, it's not an estimate, we're just taking aggregate of salaries, applying multiplication factors, and saying that there's going to be growth of some value. Because we're actually going person by person, figuring out where they are in the step schedule, for example, the movement to the next schedule. The schedule increase has been negotiated, making sure that we're costing all of the employees out. We also have better information about benefits, so we'll know teacher retirement rates, we'll know employee retirement rates throughout this process, so we can pull them into the budget. We get information on health insurance during the course of the year, so we're able to capture that in terms of the process. So, again, it's a good practice recommended by New York State that you do a rollover budget to kind of gauge where you could possibly be in terms of your budget development process early on. But when we do the actual budget development, we're looking at as much specific information as we can to come up with what's in the budget itself.
Okay. And do you anticipate a surplus for next year, like we've had in at least the past three previous years?
I would say at this pace, yes, we are. We have had the transportation hit, as you know, and we're looking at, we had to cover that this year out of some surplus. So, there's an example of, you know, one of those expenses that we didn't anticipate going through the budget process, but ultimately had to make. Fortunately, we have some savings in salaries. I know some of the positions we've had trouble filling. We also have people leaving or retiring that have created savings as well. Same usual ones, fuel, right now, is running relatively well. Whether that'll change, and it does change from month to month, we'll have to see where that goes. But there's a number of factors that we have to estimate that we don't have good data on, and we're doing it. We're sitting here in March, and we're talking about what might be an expense next June. So, we're a long ways out from knowing expenditures at this point. So, I think what was instructive, and some of you sat in on it a year ago, we actually brought in the business practices permitting, we went through major areas of the budget, and we showed the detailed work that goes in behind salaries, special education costs, maintenance facilities costs. We picked a lot of, benefits was another area that we walked through. Spent a couple hours and a couple of nights looking in detail at all of those estimates. I know everybody would like us to actually hit the number at the end of the year exactly, but it is a budgetary process where we don't, we have imprecise information. We're making our best estimates that we can, given the information that we have at hand. And then the year unfolds, once the budget's in place. This last year, we actually added $790,000 of this wealth money to the fund balance. So, at the end of the day, because we're appropriating $849,500, so we had savings and expenditures, we had additional revenue, but after you take out the $849,500 that we have recovered, that's taken out of that fund balance, because that's what we appropriated. At the end of the day, it was $790,000 that was above and beyond the tax levy limit that we put into reserves. And again, one of those reserves is the capital reserve that's being used to help offset the cost of Capital Project to the $2,150,000, so...
Okay. And if, at the end of this fiscal year, we find that we do have a surplus over the summer, can that money be used in terms of tax relief? Instead of putting it into reserves, can it be used instead of raising taxes as much as we would?
If you choose to do that, yes. When we set the tax rate, you can determine how much you want to appropriate from fund balance to lower the tax levy.
Okay. And then I have a more specific question about the school resource officer and the kind of change in the way that the fees will be paid. Is there any way, since the district does serve four towns, to look to the other three towns and ask that they contribute as well? Since the town of Gilderland would be contributing part, and the district would be contributing part, can it be the town of Gilderland and the other three towns? I know they don't have as large of a percentage, and of course, we wouldn't want to ask them to split it equally, but is that something we've explored?
I'm not sure how that would work, because we're actually working in the town to host a town employee. So, Nick Engel works for the town of Gilderland, the police department. So, what you see in the proposal from last week, which actually is modified a little bit, we got some new data on Thursday, I think, of last week, is the share between the town of Gilderland, how much the town of Gilderland pays toward other resource officers' salary and how much the district paid. So, the town has asked that we pick up a greater share of the salary. And Neil, did you happen to bring the number with us, with you, that we got from Chief Lawler?
I did not.
I didn't either. It's less than we anticipated in, so I think it's, maybe, I'm not going to guess, I can't remember, but it is a lesser number than we anticipated. So, I don't know, to answer your actual question, what we would be asking the other towns to do... to do, to contribute to a town of Gilderland salary?
Well, my point is that the district serves children from four towns, not just one, and this resource officer serves children from four towns, not just one. So, even though it's a town employee, that employee is actually serving students from four different towns, and I don't know that there's any harm in asking those other towns to contribute a small percentage of the cost of that individual, just a suggestion.
Okay.
Through the budgetary process, and we are taxing the other towns for the expenses of the school districts. So, those other four towns are contributing to the tax revenue that supports all the operations of the school district.
Okay. And then, I was just wondering, because we've had this conversation in the past, if you can comment on the enrollment in all of our foreign language classes and how equally they're spread out, and does enrollment still support offering everything that we do?
I think the answer is largely yes. I think we have some very low numbers in German at the high school, if I recall correctly.
And the reason I ask that question is because I know that we are adding additional point two, I think, for sign language, which would fulfill a foreign language requirement. So, at least since I've been here, we've added both sign language and Italian, and I know some of our neighboring districts are not adding, but they're actually, to save money and become more cost-effective, removing options. I think it's a good idea that we do have more diverse programming, but fiscally, is it the right thing to do? And is, are there enough students interested in that we would do it?
There are absolutely enough students interested in American Sign Language. I think we have a full section of 20-plus students who are.
And I wasn't targeting that, I was looking across the board. Is there still interest in German, like there maybe was years ago?
We will look at those enrollment numbers, and I think the high school is getting to the point where we're going to see actually how many students would be enrolled in those programs. And we do adjust those FTEs. For example, if we only have three students in German, five or six, we would not offer it, we would look for some other avenue for those students if they need it, or move that FTE to a place where we have larger class sizes. So, that's, the challenge in the world languages is that not all languages, not everyone is able to teach all of the languages, so it does become a bit of a puzzle. But we do watch those numbers as the enrollment comes in, and German five is the one that's low at the moment. I see Mr., five students, so we'll have to watch that.
Okay.
What does that mean for the other grades below? If you have five at the, you said at the high school level, but is that like juniors and seniors, advanced levels?
Largely, yes.
So, are the numbers dwindling at the younger grades?
If you remember last year, we had quite a discussion. This year, the numbers are sufficient to continue the program as we have. It's just at that upper level, we have fewer.
I don't have any other questions on the budget. Does anybody else have, Barbara?
Just a little, simple one. In the athletic budget for the equipment for the boys and the girls, last year's budget was 6,700, and this year, they've cut it to 2,500. What are we not replacing or conditioning, whatever, for that amount of money?
The money this year was to replace soccer goals, one at middle school and one at high school, and the requests, I'm trying to keep up the requests last year for equipment, but basically, the request, more expensive than last year, less expensive equipment this year.
Last year was the pole vault pit, which was very expensive.
So, it's really a function of the needs of equipment replacement, fiscal education program. So, last year's pit was more expensive, this year, it's the soccer goals, so you see reduction in that.
So, the money that we saved in that line, we're applying to the soccer goals, basically?
Well, basically, the soccer goals are less, so you can see some savings in that line, in the budget, less expensive equipment. Dean, I think Ben has a question.
Ben?
This question is for Damian. The expansion of the co-teaching model into middle school, was that something that we always intended to do, or is it based on successes at the high school? And where do we rank on that progress as compared to other districts?
Was it always something we intended to do? I don't think it was our primary goal upfront, but certainly, the high school, the middle school has been monitoring what's been taking place at the high school and recognizing the success. I think there's always been an interest in co-teaching. I think the structure and the schedule and the nature of the middle school model require some different approaches than what we've done previously, so they're willing to make some adjustments at this point. I'm looking at Mike Lester, they're looking primarily at eighth grade for that adjustment to see how it goes next year and see if we want to progress into seventh and sixth grade. And then, as far as ranking goes, I would have to do some research on that. I don't know what a ranking would be around co-teaching right now.
I would say that we are leading, generally speaking, in that area, just based on conversations I've had with my colleagues at the suburban council level. Other districts are looking to add co-teaching, and they've asked, who have we worked with? How have we done it? What has our success been like? So, we may not be first in line, but we are very much toward the front of the line.
Thank you.
Other questions on the budget, or are we ready to move on to the capital project? Sean?
We talked about the class size with German. What is it, what are the class minimums for courses like that?
At the high school, it's 15. I'm looking at Mike again, so that's our general rule, if it's under 15. Now, if it's 14, and those 14 students need the core course to finish a sequence, we're absolutely going to offer it. But that's our, it's a guideline, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're going to do capital project questions, and then we're going to open it to everybody to ask budget and capital. Okay. Anybody have any questions on the capital project or comments on the capital project?
Can we have an introductory few slides just to show a couple of adjustments to the project, if that's okay?
Sure. And the adjustments come from the work of the district and?
Business practices.
And business practices, or, and the contractors and architects?
We're on the hot water heater, and we also talked about potentially an additional funds in this building for specifically underground infrastructure.
Okay. And this, these changes that were made in conjunction between the district and the contractors and architects?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, we're sitting right here.
Okay.
Melissa Recklitz from CS Arch, and Beth Di Battista from Turner Construction. So, just real quick, where we were on the 11th, 30 million, 600,000, I talked about the hot water heater at Westmere, and I did not, like the price tag, it really came down to where we had natural gas in the building, where we didn't. We converted to an electric hot water heater that drops that price tag almost 66,000. I'm proposing we add another thousand feet of sewer pipe lining in this building. As eager, we're in an epic sewer battle in this building. And a thousand feet's not a lot, either. There's thousands of feet of pipe. We would target the pipe that's in the worst condition. So, that's about 154,000, 155, and then the cost escalation, that goes up a little bit because it is a net add to the project for 30,700,000. Pictures say a thousand words sometimes. This was a four-inch line, I was almost plugged off and rotted. It came from a custodial slop sink. This is what they call a key wire connection, and this is looking down, so actually, if you're lucky, nothing overflowed here. That's a hole right there in that. So, we come in here, this comes from the auditorium bathrooms, the boys and girls' room by the auditorium. We cut all this out, replaced with PVC and couplings, and I mean, this is just what we're up against with some of the age of the infrastructure in this building. So, just a reminder for everybody, we are at 42.7 originally. We have reductions around 12 million, puts the May referendum at 30.7 with everything we talked about, including those two changes, finance amounts about 27.6, which includes the 3.1 million from the capital reserve fund. October, that was around $103 for taxpayer impact, and we're around $65 taxpayer impact. I'm married to a former assessor, I'm not even talking about that. With that, oh, actually, I got one other thing before the flag starts. Happy to report, our solar farms are actually online. Connected on the grid. Before anybody asks a question, no, I am not going to make any adjustments in the budget proposal for this year until we get it up and running, make sure everything's good. There actually are multiple layers to how that, we get our remote net metering credits, so just give you guys something to look forward to next year, when you make adjustments based on a reduction of the management.
What kind of adjustment are you thinking?
You don't know. Eventually, it would be nice, not in the beginning. Okay, it's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Questions on the capital project or comments? Barbara?
Just a follow-up to your change from the oil hot water heater to an electric. Even though it would save us the $65,000 in the long run, again, you're the engineering expert, is it natural gas a heck of a lot cheaper over the long run or not?
Not, not for the cost of running that line to where we need it in the building. We would be well over, you're probably 40, 50, 60-year payback versus on the electric. I mean, the electric ones are smarter now than they were. I mean, it's not just on all the time. We can get one that you can actually program, so it learns the cycle of the building, and we actually have circulation pumps in our building. Because of the size, we don't circulate hot water all the time. They're timed only when we're occupied, so when, you know, teachers come in classrooms, the circulator pumps turn on, hot water heater off a lot, so it's not a, it's not a good return on the investment. It'd be great to have to do a natural gas one, but not there.
Other questions and comments on the capital project?
Can I just say, just to Tim, thank you for going through and putting your suggestions to us. Appreciate it getting, I don't agree with them all, but I appreciated getting them so I could think, well, so I could think about. They weren't things that I necessarily thought about. Thank you.
Tim, do you have other?
Is that something I can speak to, or?
Sure.
Did the email speak for itself, or?
No, I think, I think you can, you can speak to it.
I guess, just in general, you know, we've been asked to think about it as a board, so I already talked about being a worrier, and that I am still worried about the number, although I'm very appreciative that it's down to 30.7. I did, again, just in, you know, not to be critical of the work that's been involved or anything, I just went through and took a look at some items that maybe could be taken out. I tried to look at it evenly across all the buildings. I tried to look at it kind of inside to outside to work on maintaining as much of the project work that's going to be inside, like science labs. When I hear from a science teacher that, you know, the science lab is the same as when they were a student here in Gilderland, and that teacher's, you know, not 25 years old, is significantly older. Not that old, though. But again, you get the idea that it's antiquated, and so the science lab's definitely a jump up as something that needs to be done. When we receive pictures of damage on the roof at the high school, and I know that was a problem at Westmere, I think, earlier in the school year, you know, obviously, we have some problems that have to be taken care of. I guess, and I know you looked at the total project and what you feel needs to be done, and I looked at it a little bit differently to kind of target a number and see if you can fit within that. So, just a different way of looking at things. I'm not saying any way is better than the other, just good for discussion. So, I went through and just highlighted some things. I'm not going to read through the list, but it ended up being, if I did my math right, which I said was a big if, that it would be another, if you took out the things that I said to take out, that you'd save around 2.7 million. And when you subtracted that, at that time, I thought it was 30.6 mil that I subtracted from, so I'm off a little there, that that would bring the proposed building project to 27,905,271. And then, I thought if we were able to, again, use some of that money that Neil talked about earlier to bring down the cost to around 25 million, if that would maybe get that median homeowner tax impact to around $50. Again, I just think that that's a good, possibly, a good selling point to get it down a little bit more. You know, I took out things like asphalt paving for our parking lots. I've driven around the parking lots, I know they're bad. I took out sidewalk repairs. I'm going to assume that they are falling apart and need to be repaired. So, I took out things, understanding that they need to be taken, you know, that they need to be looked at and fixed. But, I also wonder, you know, when is too much, too much? One thing I did suggest taking out was, and I guess I'll couple two things together, the security film on doorway entrance areas, which was at 176,074. And then, there's emergency lighting that doesn't exist now, right? I'm pretty sure. This would be something new? This is replacement?
Yeah, replacement of existing.
Oh, okay, all right. I misread that, because that would have been 43,995 times five, so 219,975. Again, I suggested taking that out only as an exercise in trying to bring this down a little bit farther. Again, not critical of any of the work or anything like that. I guess I would just have a couple comments on the security film, and as it applies to school safety in general. And, again, you know, when I started working in the district, and I remember, I can't remember the year exactly, but it was about 28 or 30 years ago, one time at Westmere, there had been a jewel robbery out at a store on Western Avenue, pretty close to the school, and that was quite the hubbub as we arrived at school that day. Again, this is way back in time, and, you know, I just have vivid memories of the state police helicopter landing in the back of Westmere on the fields there. We had state police crawling all through the woods that you could watch right out the windows. There was state police on horseback going by with their shotguns out, and, you know, at that time, the teachers and the students were glued to the windows watching all of this unfold. It was quite something. Then Columbine happened, then Sandy Hook happened, and Parkland most recently. And of course, now, we would be in lockdown, now you wouldn't be at the windows watching anything of the sort. You perhaps wouldn't even be in school with something like that going on. So, that's certainly how times have changed, and I guess I just come from a perspective of being in the classroom, a teacher, with students through all this time period, and thinking about security. And then, you know, we went through the duck and cover drills, and we go through the shelter in place drills, and we go through the lockdown drills, but you're always kind of left with that nagging feeling that, you know, if there's a real problem and you've got bad guys in your building, you're still a sitting duck, whether you have security film on the entrance windows or wherever. We've seen in a lot of the instances, other than I think Sandy Hook, nobody shot their way into buildings, they have the weapon in the building, and the violence happens within. Again, if you're in a classroom and there's no security film on your windows, that's not going to help you much. So, I guess I've always struggled with this idea of security film and cameras. The speaker last week, though, had me thinking very differently about it. The Westmere parent, I thought she was very effective and made a lot of great points. So, I guess where I'm leading with all of this is there's that, again, not to keep throwing cliches out there, but when seconds count and help is minutes away, what do you do? I would rather see more money for school safety and security going towards beefing up more of a police presence, like we have in the budget for the high school with the resource officer. resource officer. I think we have to move in that direction. I know this is going to be a huge debate in Saratoga this year for their school board race and their school election up there. I guess I would like to see more of a police presence at the high school and the middle school especially so that when you need help, it's seconds away and not minutes away. And so I would rather forego some of these other security measures to maybe beef up more of a police presence. This has just always been a concern of mine, again, when you're in the classroom with your students and you're, you just know you're a sitting duck, it's not a great feeling. And I just would like to see a little more of a beefed up security aspect. So I don't, you know, that doesn't fit in necessarily with the building project, but I think that I would see, rather see us move in that direction than security film around doors and entrances, even though I do agree that that would be helpful to a point. So.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question related to that?
Yeah.
So the school has a safety committee, but it's only people who are working in the district? So it's not parent or community members involved?
That's correct. We have a district-wide safety steering committee and then we have building-level safety committees as well.
Has there been like a thought of having a task force or a committee where there's, their parents are always emailing us and coming to speak at public comment, good ideas about safety? So I'm wondering how we can get them included in the conversation? Like they bring it to us and then it kind of stops because we don't work here and there's no committee set up for that?
I mean, this didn't happen. We, when we put together the facilities committee originally, which they had a cross-representation of employees and community members, we devoted one of our meetings solely to safety and security. The security film conversation was really started, it was actually started from Peter in that meeting that particular day, that that conversation came up. And I see Mr. America comes to, it all comes to time. And when you say seconds, you know, all the training we do, all the training we've done with PPD sheriffs, you know, you'd sit here and say, if somebody wants to do harm, probably do it to some level. How much time can we buy to, if they decide they want to try to shoot through the door that has the film on it, to get our kids in the classrooms, which now we can secure, which back, you know, in the 70s, 80s, 90s, we didn't secure. And different things we have, this is raw checking, we have tape lines in classrooms and stuff are like line of sight. So maybe somebody coming by, usually somebody coming in to do harm either has a target or they're just going, you know, willy-nilly. They check the door, it's locked, they move on. They don't want to, they don't want to waste their time. So we did have those conversations, see them, to a point, but we don't have like an active, you know, like parent or parents or community members on the sitting committees now.
I mean, I just think it'd be a good suggestion because I know people have asked to be involved, but they don't work here and they've come to public comment with good ideas. There was another thought, I forgot, related to that. Oh, and also because, I mean, obviously, the bond was, failed in October. And so, you know, if we want people to know that their input matters and safety was one of the big concerns that parents had been talking about, then why not include them in on the conversation? I mean, we kind of talked about it early in the year, like in the fall, about what are we going to do about school safety? We had a discussion, I think Ben brought up something about having, I don't know if it was a meeting with the public or something like that, but it was never followed up on. But I know it continued to be important, obviously. So I'm just wondering if, or that's a suggestion, I guess, for, you know, going forward. And I just have one more question.
Sure.
This has to do more with the communication plan. So what Tim was mentioning about the, I guess, the sticker price for, you know, the budget, the construction, the library and the transportation, some of the comments I know that we always see on the exit surveys are, if you're not a parent, you're not as well-informed. So I'm just wondering what the plan is to get those people, you know, what, do they know what the vote is about?
Well, we'll do mailings for sure. We've been talking with Aubrey just now about perhaps doing an early mailing that tries to hit some of the highlights, particularly the information that Neil shared a little while ago about the assessments, because I think that's high on everybody's list. We, you're right, it's much easier to communicate with people who are connected to schools. We have SNN, we have their emails, we have Facebook. We have a commitment to spend some time with the, the Council of Neighborhood Association. Usually 50 or 60 people go to that, you know, we'll communicate through the enterprise as we always do. I see Elizabeth's here right now. I'm sure she'll have lots of information to share. But I am very open to suggestions about how we reach people who are not necessarily immediately connected to the school or who are not connected to other groups. Because we're very interested in getting word out about the nature of our project and why it's important for us to do it, why it's important for our community to have schools that are safe, secure, up to par when it comes to instruction. So we're open to ideas.
And this is not for now, but for the future, like one of my neighbors' suggestions, why don't they have like, you know, offering to pick up people so they can come to the school to vote? I mean, is that against the rules?
Yes, I think it is.
Using school buses to do that.
What's that?
Using school buses to do that, yeah.
Oh, not using school buses. I'm just talking about in general, to get people to the building to vote.
I don't think the school district can do that. Others may organize, but.
PPAs or any of the other groups.
Yes, but I think we would be in some trouble there.
I know we have the, I know October was not a good time. We have May, you know, in our favor this time, but there's still a large price on there and then the reassessment. People see those things that come in the mail about their taxes, but they don't see the details of what's involved in, you know, the budget and the bond act. So I'm just, I'm a little worried about that. The communication piece, I think, is something we have to focus on.
One of my concerns with that, though, is we've tried any number of things to, I don't, you know, I, we want people here. We try and get people in whatever ways, all the different evening activities we've had through the years. This isn't just for this particular, the numbers are dwindling and people may see it on the computer, but it's harder to get more people to come.
Right. So I'm saying.
Yeah, and, you know, it's a communication perhaps, but.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, you know, instead of accepting that, we should try to be more creative or include other people in on the conversation to get the word out there.
I think we have. I mean, it seems to me we've tried all different kinds of ways to get people to come. It doesn't mean they're coming. They are coming.
Right, but it didn't pass in October. That, I guess, I understand what you're saying because I was on communications before. I know all the different, like flyers that, you know, that were created and stuff, but obviously didn't work.
And we're trying to dissect that, too, in the meetings, trying to understand where people are getting their messages from in the sense that we can, we can through analytics. You know, it's the, the other side of it, the people that aren't coming in a manner that we can verify or validate. It's a big challenge.
Other questions on the capital project? Barbara?
I had a question. What would it take to upgrade the middle school science labs in conjunction with the, with the high school? It would seem to me it'd be a logical thing to do. And from the standpoint of safety, we've heard for years from teachers that when you have more than you should have in a lab setting, which we've been doing for a number of years, you do risk accidents happening. And although those labs are a little bit younger than the, obviously, the high school ones, what is the price tag and what we'd have to come up with to do that project?
We targeted six labs at the middle school originally, it's about $1.4 million. This proposal, I split those across priority two and priority three. We put four labs in priority two, that's like $866,000. Two labs in priority three, $433,000. Reason we lined up four labs, conversations with our middle school admin staff that aligns our eighth grade, double align our eighth grade curriculum and more modern labs coming into hopefully what will be a more modern lab at the high school.
So we'd have to come up with, what did you say, $400,000 to do that?
If you wanted to do the.
The eighth grade labs.
What door do you want to go behind? If you wanted to go eighth grade, it's $866,000. Four labs, we're going to be four labs.
And if we were to eliminate the film, that'd be about $200,000 of that.
$176, yes.
And the cameras, the, you know, the extra lighting to replace the lighting, that's another $200,000. So you're bringing it down to 400.
That is correct. I would just, can I just, can we just talk about emergency lighting? Because this isn't like your home or public occupied space. We have emergency lighting throughout all our programs. All different vintages, different ages, which are just different components, whether it be control board, because they have a sense when power goes out, they have backups. We strive to have them last for 90 minutes. Like I tell you, when we have the power out, it's a linwood. I mean, we do maintain them, they're tested monthly, but we don't test them for 90 minutes. We test them just to make sure they're operational, if they last five, if they last an hour. We probably, we lost most of the lighting in linwood within 30 minutes. So this would be updating at least all our elementary schools. That's what we can standardize, because we're planning on a bit, hopefully, we get all the same units. They'd be energy efficient, it'd be LED, you'd probably at least get 90 minutes out of them. Be easier to maintain parts. And if we were in an emergency situation again, we can see how people think, well, it's daylight. And it's daylight on the outside of the building, but you can test with, yeah, sure, in your classroom. But when you get into the interior buildings in the hallway, there's not a ton of daylight. And that particular day, I'd be overcast and it was dark. We're still trying to shuffle little people all over the place. So I know it sounds, I'm not, this is the board's decision. I just want to make sure you have all your information before you make that decision.
So if we were to do those eighth grade labs and we continue with everything that's here, how much more would that add dollar-wise to the $65?
I just get your guys.
About another dollar, $2? I mean, my concern, I guess, is that we have spent so much on safety now that it's not important. And yet, our programming, which is vital to the kids' education, is sort of being hijacked a little bit.
I will not stand here and disagree with you on that. But it's also trying to balance it out.
Well, I know.
If I look at it from an infrastructure, if I can't make the pool go down for closing up anyway, from an infrastructure standpoint.
So if you were to add the eighth grade lab so that there would be a nice transition to the high school, that $65 would go up 66 to 67? What would be your estimate?
It's probably going to go up about $2.
$2?
If we take it down.
So you weigh a modern-day program, science program, $2? I guess I would, I'd be recommending that, but.
But I think people don't look at the $2, they look at the $800,000. I agree, you know, I, I agree, that was a disappointment when I saw that had been taken out. But people are looking, you know, Tim the Worrier is looking at the $800,000. And we've got to think of that. They're not looking at the $2 so much, I don't think. I know, I, I agree. I'm just saying, looking at the picture, you look at the big number.
That's true, but you can break it down. For each item, it's X number of dollars. And, I mean, everything that's in there is vital. I mean, these are old buildings, old systems. And I guess I just have confidence in the public that, you know, they realize this. I mean, you look at Westmere, their lockers, the doors are falling off, they're sharp edges, the kids are getting cut and, but we couldn't put those in.
I know.
You know? And I just think that the public, if they knew you're sacrificing educating your kids for an intruder who may or may not, who if he or she wants to do this, no matter what we do, they are going to plan ahead and either have the thing inside or get inside through a window that doesn't have film or whatever. And, you know, we're doing one, I think, great thing with the bathroom lock sets that you pointed out from our last experience, that if you can't put the kids into a more sheltered environment, then, you know, they're sitting ducks, too. So, I mean, we're doing a lot, but I just hate losing the programming. And particularly for STEM, this is so vital in this day and age. And we're not probably going to have another capital project for another five years, right? I mean, that's been our tradition. And so we're going to wait another five years, which means almost eight years in order for our science labs to be up to snuff. And it doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I think the public is smart enough to understand that these are decrepit buildings, that we're not doing anything extraordinary here. We're just trying to maintain. If you don't maintain your school buildings, your property values are going to go down because people aren't going to want to come to move into the district to go to our schools. And, I mean, we have been very reflective. I think we've been very, very cautious, cost-conscious over the years. We've planned out these bond projects over a time period so that as one goes off, you maintain your buildings, you know, with another bond project. I guess whatever the process would be, I would lobby and maybe put something on the floor to say, I think at least those eighth grade science labs have to be brought up to snuff. If you want to maintain yourself as a modern-day, up-to-date district that is providing your kids with what they need in science education, I'm a bit prejudiced, I was a science teacher, I guess that's the end of my story. I just would, would hate to see those labs not in there.
I think we'd all like to see every piece of it in there. But we got a message from the voters that said no. And unfortunately, we don't get to ask the voters in that same ballot, how much are you willing to spend? And so we've got to try to figure it out, how to knock it back. Because I, you know, if we were to go around and try to swap out priorities, we're all going to have a different set, right? You know, I think the security film should be in there and the emergency lighting, but I don't know if the uninterrupted power supply needs to be at the middle school because that's not safety, that's inconvenient. So I think it's going to, you know, it's going to be a challenge balancing that out. I don't disagree that those labs at the middle school need to be addressed. I just don't know how to do it.
Well, again, you lost by, we lost by 58 votes.
I'd rather lose by 58 than win by 58, though.
And we've cut it, we've cut it by, what, almost 20, no, 12 million. And so if we add this lab, if, see, my problem is if we don't do it in this project, these kids are going to be behind in this district for the next eight to nine years because you're not going to have another bond for five years. You know, it takes two to three years before you actually go into construction and do things. Do we really want to penalize our students that much and not trust the voters to understand that we are really just doing what we have to do? If we don't do the asphalt or whatever, the kids in the next five or six years, they may trip or you might get a tire or something that, you know, blows out. But you can never replace the education that those kids lose if you, if you don't maintain your programs. And I just, I don't want to take any more time, but that, that's my thinking. If we don't do it this time and trust the voters and explain to the voters what we've done, I mean, we have cut a lot of things that really, to maintain your building, we should be doing. But education, you can't lose those six years of kids going through and not having access to a modern instructional situation.
That's, it seems like that's what.
Think about it for the next meeting.
It seems that, you know, looking at how this, when the board changes every year, right? Every time somebody new comes on or it's a different board. We go through this process of developing a budget. We send the message back to the district office team to be austere and try to do your best. And then we get back to the end, we add things back in. I feel like we're, we're doing that again. Again, I can't, I can't reiterate how much I think those labs are important, but where do we trade? Because I don't know what the voter is going to, is going to accept. Because we don't, we're not, we don't get to collect that level of information. I think I could, I said before, I spend $100 on one thing. I think I could, I, I said before, I spent a hundred dollars on, on one thing that was completely frivolous, but I, I can't tell somebody else not to spend their money. That's, that's.
I guess I just have a level of trust with the people valuing education and seeing that what we're doing is best by the taxpayer and best by the kids. Each time you don't do these projects, what the taxpayer has to realize, the next time you have to do them, it's even gonna be more expensive. And that's a fact.
I thought we, and I thought that's where we were in, in October. I thought that we had done our due diligence, but we got a message.
I'm in support of your suggestion, Barbara, the, the labs at the middle school, also for all the reasons you mentioned. I know we talked about it before, but I'm gonna bring it up for the next meeting.
Gloria?
Ben.
Ben?
Um, so I just wanna say, um, you know, if we had won, i- i- if, if the bond had passed in October by seventy-something votes, no one would be saying, oh, well, that was kind of a close vote. We shouldn't, um, you know, maybe we should be careful with this money, right? So, um, just because we lost by a few votes, doesn't mean we didn't lose, right? It's, it's not a matter of, 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 oh, we only gotta grab, you know, thirty more to swing it. It's, it's, no, it's no, you know, just like if it had, if we won by one vote, it would just be totally yes. So just because we don't like the way, the way it went, doesn't mean that, that the judgment was any less final. And the other point I wanna make, um, which, which I made, I guess on the eleventh, um, when we first were presented this project, was just that, um, one of the main criticisms we heard last time was that this capital project was kind of a wish list, right? And we all happen to think that this is all critical stuff. And, um, and that's why we went forward with it, and that's why we want it to be there and to put it back and stuff. But the, the fact of the matter is, is it got voted no, and then we managed to cut like, you know, the, the second one, right? So, um, just the, the, the pure facts and PR of, of what happened here supports the argument that maybe there was some wishlessness going on in there. You know, and, and we start putting things back in, we're open to the criticism that, well, your own committee took it out. So, so, um, you know, you listened to us and then you didn't listen to us. So, so I just, I just wanna put that out there, you know, yeah, there's a ton of great things in this, in this capital project as it is, a lot of things that we wanna put back in. But just in terms of like what the voters were saying, not just how they voted, but like the feedback we got, you know, putting stuff back in would, would look pretty bad, I think.
But Ben, taking it out doesn't mean it was a wish list. We had to take something out. We couldn't put up the same number again. So cutting those things doesn't necessarily mean, it doesn't equate to a wish list. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we could have put things, we, we could have put the same number up again, right? I mean, after all, only, we only lost by seventy votes. And if everything was really, really necessary, what choice would we have? But, but A, that's, cutting some things is different than cutting twelve point whatever million dollars, right? So, um, you know, I, I, I'm just putting it out there that, um, you know, yes, those of us who are involved very deeply in all the details, we kind of understand this stuff. But there's someone just kind of like casually looking at this, oh, they called it a wish list and yep, they managed to take out thirty percent of the stuff, so, um, and then, oh, they're putting stuff back in. So, uh, I, I'm just, you know, there's, there's an optics issue here.
I, I guess, I, I don't see it as we're putting stuff back in. I see this as still a draft. We're still working on this. I mean, that's why we're here tonight. You know, this isn't the final yet until the nineteenth, until the board votes on it. So it's not about putting things back in, it's about reflecting on what's been put before us. I personally agree totally with what, with what Barbara has said. I think we have a responsibility to our students to, to provide the best and the top notch educational environment. That's what our parents love about this place. I mean, you think about the, the survey we just saw, our parents, on the, um, the thought exchange. Teachers, quality of teachers came out first and the academic programs. If we don't support them, they're not gonna support us. So, um, you know, I don't think this is a matter of taking things out or putting things in and that's gonna somehow affect the public's perception. This is a work in progress right now, and the board is giving its, its feedback. So I, I would support what Barbara's saying, moving that priority from two to one for the middle school, for at least the eighth grade classes, the science labs.
Cliff?
I just wanna say, when, if, if you look at the document that we shared on the eleven, we deferred a lot of work. The work didn't go away, it disappeared. It still exists and it will come back. Case work in our elementary classrooms that was in there and it's from the fifties that has fallen apart that we, we chip away at every year. But there's five hundred classrooms in the school district. That work didn't disappear. We, I moved it, saying, if we really had to make a decision, can we live with it? Yeah, we'll, we'll keep patching it together. But at some point, we need to do that work. The work on the trap, one of the things I asked the board to take a look at. We can resurface it now. I pushed other work to say, eh, we can do it. We can resurface it, get five years out of it, but if we replaced it whole, it's gonna increase the life of the trap. So did you just arbitrarily say we went in and just cut and it's gone?
It's not gone.
It's still there. The work's there, the work's gonna come back, right? I kicked the can.
It's still gonna be potholes.
It's how far we wanna kick the can, that's the question.
Barbara?
Ben, I have a question for you. In your travels through the district, even amongst the students, in my travels, I did not hear anyone complaining about the, the science labs needing to be updated to educate our kids for the future. And you're, you're mentioning that, you know, we're deferring some things. As I think Cliff is pointing out, all these things have to be done. We're just kicking the can down the road, um, you know, to the future, at which point it'll be more expensive and maybe even more difficult to fix. But particularly with those science labs, as I said, um, I think Gloria hit it on the head. Our parents and taxpayers, I think, want a strong, vital educational program. And as you know, because you're an expert in a lot of this stuff, science and technology are the way of the future. I mean, everything is centered around, um, how we, how we learn, how we do things and, and all the technology that's available. So I guess I would just ask you to think about it until we actually have to vote on it.
Other questions or comments? Sean?
There's one, you know, you mentioned about the surplus. What would happen at the end of the year if we have a surplus? You know, how do we make use of that to address some of these? I would, I would ask that question more rhetorically, you know, is there a, a way to, to tap into that?
I think I asked that earlier, right? There was four things that are set for that, if there's a surplus.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about in the.
In the budget.
In the general, the operating budget. I'm thinking about in the, in the capital project. We're going at it from the same, same point, different directions.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I think it's great that we have a lot of community members here this evening that might be able to weigh in on this conversation and provide a different perspective than what some of us are seeing. So I will invite anybody who has questions to come up to the microphone, say your name, and go ahead with the question. Come on up.
I'm not sure where to start, so. Kim Blazek, I'm here strictly as a parent tonight, for children in the district, actually one starting the fourth in the fall. First of all, I just wanna say pertaining to the budget, I do have concerns with the co-teaching class in eighth grade with the cut of the three TAs. I do understand how a true co-teaching model is supposed to be taught, but considering that there's already a shortage at the middle school of TAs, this really makes me nervous that there are three cuts. And I know that the extras are, you're saying that they can go to specials and things like that, but I think until this is really solid, I'm very nervous about those cuts right now.
Kim, can I just jump in on that point?
Yes.
Because this afternoon I was talking with Lisa Knowles, and those three TA cuts are not at the middle school. That's district wide.
Okay, because they keep coming up under the middle school, that's why I'm.
Yes, so, um, that's a good clarification to make sure that, that's not, it's not the whole, just the middle school.
Okay. I'll save that one for another meeting then. Also, just in general, on all of this, and I have pages, I won't go through it tonight, but I want, I, I know you were all trying to keep the numbers down because I know at the end of the day, the taxpayers, and by the way, Ben, it was about fifty-nine votes, not seventy. I'll say it, I know you guys can't, there was a campaign against this with a lot of misinformation towards the end that really hit the budget for, the capital project. It was unfortunate. If they actually took the time to clarify, then maybe the proper information would have gone out. So I'll say it, that really did hit it. But I want you all to keep in mind, if you keep on trying to pick and cut and cut just to keep taxes down, and I'll say it, and I know my husband's flinching, raise my taxes if you have to. I don't care, because I have kids that I want them to get the education that they deserve. But it's gonna come down to the point when you guys will all be gone and this capital project is gonna be way higher than what we proposed. And then we're gonna really have to make the hard decisions and we're not gonna be able to provide what we need to, and people aren't gonna wanna come to this district. So I just, I, I've heard tonight about the eight million from the library and the thirty point seven for our project and the hundred million for our budget. And I'm really, I've gotta say, as a parent disgusted at some of the nitpicking that's going on. Is, Mr. Heron, I have to totally disagree with your safety because as a parent who has had kids come home from Pine Bush and from Farnsworth, no offense to the schools, saying that if a book drops, it's past a book and listening to people, because Parkland had, they had police there, they had DSOs, and look what still happened. And if it gives our students and maybe even our teachers three to four minutes, because that film provides minutes, not seconds, minutes, then I'm sorry, I'm all for it. Because our kids, mental health is a huge thing now too. As you've seen, that we're only getting one point five million from the governor and his budget, if we even get that at this point. And we have kids sitting in the classroom now that have a whole different set of worries from when you first started. So every time I hear it, I'm very sorry, but it agitates me to no end. And yes, I am fully on board for the, the new science labs. But at this point, I say let the eighth grade labs go, I'm so sorry. Because we've already said it's a done deal and let's at least push forth what we have right now. It's not that we don't need it. I went to Education Twenty Thirty at NISBA and I saw the presentation and it is amazing. Judy saw it too. But we really just have to put our head down and just move forward and get this done. The last thing that I just wanted, I mean. I'm trying to really just be very calm right now because I wrote so many notes and pasted so much. The out of district busing and the private and charter schools, and I'm not gonna yell at you, don't worry. It's a hard decision for parents to have to make that decision. I just wanted to tell you, as a special need parent, as someone who's sat in CSE meetings with parents, as someone who has talked to those parents, so definitely look at the numbers, but I just wanted to tell you a lot more goes into it. I was more looking at like, see what the private and the charter schools are, if that doesn't pertain to special needs, but. But yeah, you guys have a lot of difficult choices, and no matter what, you're gonna get hit. People are gonna complain because the assessments are going up and they're gonna complain because we still have this project and everything is hitting at the same time. But realistically, if we keep prolonging everything, then we're gonna be here and some of you may or not be here, and we're gonna talk about why we really have to raise hikes because everything is going to hell. Thank you.
I'm just gonna give, um, Tim a, a second to respond.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate your comments there, and, um, I guess I would just say a couple things. First of all, for, for the people who always say that they would raise my taxes, you know, that's fine to speak for yourself, but you can't speak for everyone else.
No, that's why I very specifically said me, and I, I do understand that.
And so I would ask you, how much, how, how much extra have you sent in then?
Well, Tim, what I can tell you, and I know you haven't done this, I've gone up to the Capitol. I've spoken with our elected officials, and actually, that's one note that I did have. Keep your twenty-five hundred dollars for the board event in your budget because I think you guys do need to go to the conferences and go to those lobby days because I have been up to that Capitol at Fahey's office many times, at Amador's office many times, at other offices many times, trying to get them to fix foundation aid. And it goes above and beyond PTA. I have taken my own kids up there on Tuesdays when I've seen NISBA up there, but I don't see Gilliland. So I may not have sent an extra money for taxes, but I can guarantee you, I have busted my butt up on the Capitol and done a hell of a lot more than sending in maybe a couple dollars for taxes.
I'm just gonna step in for a second. I'm not sure why the tone is escalating in such a way. I think you both have good points, but.
I'm sorry, I escalated admittedly because I'm being asked by Mr. Heron how much extra in tax money I have spent, sent in.
I, I just wanna keep the tone of the meeting.
Nope, I'm sorry. I'm actually gonna, because I will get very upset about this, but.
She, she gets to talk now.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't get to say a word to her. You know, I didn't interrupt her the entire time.
You, you, you can respond. I'm just, I just am giving a reminder to the room.
I'm not even.
To, to think about our tone and.
In all fairness here, um, I, I have been to the Capitol, I have been to Senator Amador's. I've sat, sat down several times with his chief aide, Doug Elmandorf. So I. You know, I'll, I'll be done.
Nope, I'm so sorry. It wasn't you. I was just gonna say his age just changed. That's all. I'm so sorry.
I mean, come on. You know, this, this is not right to, to be attacking and then not allowing any kind of a response without interruption.
Tim, I apologize. That was a total slip because I was literally just up there. That was a slip.
Are you sure you don't wanna?
I'm done. It's not worth it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we will invite our next speaker. Just come on up and identify yourself and.
Hi, I'm Jim Sifarelli. I'm a resident of Gilliland. So I'm trying to collect my thoughts after listening to everybody else's thoughts. And the thing is, is, you know, I, I voted no on the referendum last fall. And, uh, you know, if it was fifty million dollars, it wouldn't have bothered me if the money was just spent well. And, uh, you know, after the vote, after it was, uh, put down, I, I spent some time in November and December and I hounded Cliff over a phone system. He, so much, he, he told me to back off because he's still trying to get his thoughts together on the, on the project. And he came back and he said, uh, he did some research on it and he, he found a way to move it from nearly eight hundred thousand to take about five hundred thousand off of it. And, uh, same thing with an irrigation tank that we hunted him out in, in the fall at the Q and A. And he came back and he said, yeah, you know, I put my thinking cap on and we were able to figure out a new way to get that project done for, I don't know, half the cost or something like that. And the thing is, is I wanted to keep going. I didn't want to stop at six projects that he put his thinking cap on and was able to knock hundreds of thousands of dollars off. I think you owe it to the public to put your thinking cap back on and keep doing that with the other projects. I also had a question about the buses. Looked like you wanted to add six new large buses. You sold a bunch of small buses. You said over and over again about how hard it is to get bus drivers. So I was just curious why we needed six new buses. If we don't have bus drivers to drive them, what are we doing with the six?
Yep, we can respond to that question.
Those are replacement buses, so as buses age out, we're replacing them. We're also, as part of the proposal, are reducing the overall fleet. So we have, um, buses, as they get older, they go to a spare pool. So we have spare buses and we have to take buses out of service for routine maintenance, DOT inspections, things like that. If we have a need for a bus at a particular location. But, uh, our buses are going eleven, twelve, thirteen years. You saw, if you saw the presentation, there's body rest and things like that that make them difficult to maintain after a certain point in time. So we, those are aged out.
Okay.
The buses come in and replace them. So we're keeping the fleet size about the same we did reduce.
So expect to see those that, uh, sold, like the, like the small buses were sold, okay. You know, just, uh, one thing I had on my mind from. You know, just one thing I had on my mind from what Kim was saying about the, we've heard a lot about the safety film and how passionate she is, is she still here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. And, you know, it does seem like a good idea to have safety film on, and you look at the cost of it, and, you know, if you do half a day of research on safety film, you see so many different price tags from different companies that can install safety film that can decrease, you know, the glass breakage from either a bullet or from sledgehammer and all the, all those demonstrations. And the prices do vary, and I hope, maybe that's another project, you can put your thinking cap on, because maybe there's a way to get that done at a quarter of the price.
Yep, go ahead.
When you're looking at a project this size, I'll give you an example, something like a security film would go under the GC, a general contractor, so you're bidding out, you know, portions of the work. We don't take it to the level of, we're going to go solicit a single security film contractor. The GC would do that. It's going to be bid, so they do competitively bid it, but it's going, you know, it'd be bid in a GC package, so you have maybe four general contractors that are going to bid against our work, which would be competitive. But also keep in mind, when, if the community's going to look at pricing online and stuff like that, we're going to definitely pay prevailing wage, which is much different than, you know, I could probably go to Home Depot and get security film, but that's not going to be the same as necessarily what we're going to purchase for 3M. And sure, I could probably find a contractor to install it, you know, cheaper, just on face value, but we have to look at, we have to abide by the laws through state education department, so it's planning as well, on how we bid this stuff, so it can be easy to come out and say some of these things, and that, Jim and I are old buddies now. You know, so I mean, I respect what he's saying, but it's not always that easy just to come out and say, yeah, we'll do that on a certain section.
Okay, I think we had Sarah standing up.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Richardson, and I teach first grade at Westmere Elementary School. And I'm actually here just to ask you all to reconsider some of your priorities in the Capitol project. I want to give you some perspective from the front lines, from people who are actually in the buildings every day, teaching these little kiddos. And before I begin, I just want to let you know that I really feel lucky to be a part of Gilderlin, it's an awesome district. Westmere is like a second home to me, the people there are fantastic. But as you know, it is an old building, and it does require maintenance to upkeep. And earlier this year, I was one of the five classrooms that was affected by the water damage in September, and I have to say that maintenance was amazing afterwards, they were helping to move things, Neil was there helping to move things on the day of, they got right to work that night and the weekend after, replacing tiles and lights and all that, and they definitely haven't stopped there. And even some of the major infrastructure problems are not even in the Capitol project, but there are a few things that I think I just want to bring to your attention, just so that you're aware. So a few classrooms have ongoing issues related to, and then also unrelated to the flood, and I super apologize if the terminology isn't completely correct, but we have, in one room, there's a roof drain that continues to leak, and the ceiling tile gets wet every time there's a lot of rain or melting snow. And there's also a floor drain in another classroom that leaks water from the ground up. And it's not unusual to see maintenance up on the roof, including this morning, I was working with a group of kiddos in a reading group, and there are some of the maintenance guys on the roof, and you hear their feet, and they're bringing up hoses and extension cords and things, just to make sure that everything is ready to keep the kids safe, keep the building in working order as we need to at this point. They did mold tests to make sure that our rooms were safe, and two rooms will be retested soon. And then today, due to an unrelated water issue, there was some more damage underneath the counter in my classroom, so there was construction paper and crafts and things that were ruined and had to move that, there was actually some mold on some of the papers, so, and there's like terrible smell in the room now. So this is just one of the many issues at Westmere, I mean, you've heard about the lockers, and also the case, casing? Casework. So that's like the counters and the cabinets there, they're the originals from the nineteen-fifties, and knowing that, I'm sure that my room is not the only one that has had water damage and things that are, you know, like, it's safe, the air is safe, but also, just knowing that we need to maintain our classrooms to make sure that they're safe and healthy places for students to work, and also for staff and teachers to be there as well. So I just hope that you can reconsider, you're welcome in my classroom anytime, I have now decided I'm not using that cabinet anymore, I have since moved everything in that cabinet to another bookshelf, because I'm tired of moving the stuff. But I know that there was two classrooms slotted to have that replaced, just in the regular budget, but even if you look at putting in maybe a few more rooms to have the casework replaced in each of the buildings, I think that that would be great. So maybe not all, but maybe some. And think about the lockers again, too, because they still need to be replaced as well. But thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marie Wiles, Board Hays and Members. I'm Mark Grimm, I'm an Albany County legislator representing Gilderlin, a former town board member, and spent five years on the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee that used to study the budget here. One of the things I want to speak to right away, this notion that it went down, that the Bond Act went down because people were misinformed, is nonsense. Let me tell you my perspective on where Gilderlin voters are. They are fed up with high school taxes. I have campaigned on every street in this town, and it is by far the number-one issue. And by the way, it's the number-one reason why people are leaving Gilderlin, because they cannot afford their high school taxes. And my question to the board is, what are you doing about it? Because we cannot remember the last time this administration cut school taxes, can't remember it. The Albany County is cutting the tax rate this year 4.3%. We've cut the county tax rate six straight years, so it can be done. So the question is, why aren't you cutting taxes? Now, let's speak about the Bond Act for a minute. We were told that these were critical needs, this forty-three million dollars, to Ben's point, we were told these were critical needs. Now, we're told, well, thirty-one million dollars are now critical needs, so they weren't that critical in the first place. And the bigger question is, among voters is, hey, you are spending a hundred million dollars a year, what are you doing with the money? You show these pictures of rotted pipes, why aren't they fixed? You have a hundred million dollars a year to spend. Your science lab, why aren't they fixed? You have a hundred million dollars a year to spend. My question is, how much, how much does personnel cost for the Gilderlin School District in the budget? How much is it?
About eighty percent.
Eighty percent of personnel cost. Jesse James was asked why he robs banks, he said, because that's where the money is. If we're really going to be serious about fiscal management, we have to look where the money is spent. This board has to better manage personnel costs. That's where the savings are going to come, to fix your rotted pipes and to fix your science labs. You look at the numbers, in the last eleven years, we've lost ten percent in student enrollment, we're down over five hundred students. But the budget is up over fifty percent. So we have ten percent fewer customers, and we're spending fifty percent more. That's a red flag in terms of financial accountability, and that's something that needs to be addressed by the board. Now, on the, on the, on the assessments, your tax bill are, your assessed value times the tax rate of the jurisdiction, that's how you get your tax bill. The town sent out a very confusing letter, I've been getting calls every day about what this is mean. But what I want to know from the school district is, the town says, with the increase in assessed value, the sixteen-dollar figure would be enough to make it revenue-neutral if we're doing it, and is the school district, are you saying that you're going to keep to that sixteen-dollar figure? That's my question. Because that was the town figure, that was not the school board figure, and my, my question is, are you sticking to that sixteen-dollar figure? Anybody?
Well, you know that we're limited by the tax cap, as a county legislator, you understand that.
Which, which was not the case in two thousand and five, where they raised the school property tax levy by over ten percent, and which is why there was such an uproar in the town. But that was, you didn't answer my question, though. Are you sticking to the sixteen dollars, or are you going to raise the rate?
They didn't allow me to answer the question, because you jumped in as I was talking. We are bound by the tax cap, and so that's going to limit what we can raise in terms of levies. Rate has nothing, rate has a little bit to do with levies, and you know how that's calculated too, because you have to take a look at what you are bringing in in terms of revenue, and then whatever is left over is then raised by taxes.
Well, the rate has a lot to do with the levy, because the rate, you apply the rate to assessed value, that's what the levy is, okay? And if you're saying you're limited by the cap, are you saying you're going to go up to the cap? Because that's, that's what you're telling me, you're going to go right up to the cap?
I have to correct you on that, the levy is not the rate.
The tax levy is the assessed value times the rate that the district applies.
No, it's not. The tax levy is what you need to raise.
Well, where do you think, where does the tax levy come from? How do they calculate it?
By the amount of money needed to run the district.
Well...
I just, I just, you know, you asked a question, I'm responding to it.
Well, okay, well, all right, but, you know. Another question I have. I want to speak to the languages. I talked ten years ago about Russian, Italian, German. That's a World War II motto. Although it's really the most relevant language our kids need to be, need to be hearing, need to have in their schools. This is the kind of innovation we should be, you know, thinking about, are those the kinds of things we should carry on, just because we happen to have a lot of German teachers? So I think that, that's a really good point. I also appreciate Mr. Haran and trying to get the budget down. One question I did have, maybe for Neil, is, how do we know how much reimbursement we're going to get from the state, given how nebulous the state is?
Do the same thing we do every year at this point, we're going with the executive budget proposal, and then we'll make an adjustment once the legislature approves the state budget, we will know the state aid at that time.
But I mean on the Bond Act, because you're saying, a certain percentage of Bond Act may be reimbursable, how do we know that?
Because we have history with state aid in regards to that, there's a formula for determining aid for Capitol construction projects.
So you could speak with certainty that X percentage will be reimbursed by the state?
Unless they change the rules, yes, I mean, it's a formula-driven approach.
Okay. All right, and one thing, another thing I might add, you say, why aren't more people involved, why aren't more people getting, coming? You invited members of the public for a Q and A, and they sat for two hours before they could ask any questions. Now, I think that's something you ought to consider in terms of being more citizen-friendly and trying to get people involved. How many people are really going to do that? They're going to spend their entire night at the school board, this is why they don't come? Thank you, I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Others?
Hi, my name is Peter Golden, I didn't really have a question, but I did have, it was interesting listening to it. I think something like one-third of people in the town send children to the schools, and two-thirds don't. So I'm not so sure you want a big turnout if you want the Bond Act to pass, because mathematically speaking, every three voters, out of every three voters that you, new voters that you get, you'll probably have two that are voting against it and one that are voting for it. That's not a hard and fast rule, but that's a mathematical probability. I guess my question was, it was really a comment, after the last, I was out of town for the last bond issue, I was surprised to see that it was defeated, that was kind of a rare thing. But one of the board members had said something about, the community owes you an explanation, owes the board an explanation, which I, I don't know that I really agree with that idea, but what was interesting is, when I came home and people were talking about it, this is something that I heard, and I'll just, I came here to share it with you, and if it's helpful, great. There's a sense that these bond issues are being used to avoid the tax cap, and I don't think you're doing it on purpose, I don't think there's some nefarious plot, but I don't know, this was what, the third, in October was what, the third bond issue in five years, six years, whatever it was? People begin to feel like you're trying to avoid the cap, and that it's really a way around the cap. It seems to me, and this is again just political in nature, just thinking about it, that maybe at some point you ought to think about going over the cap and saying to people, here's what we need, we have to do this, this is why, and then going out and getting sixty percent of the community to support you, which I think is what you need, is that what it is? Okay. Because here's the issue. I'm very helpful to the school, my wife and I, as are many of our neighbors, here's why. We send a lot of money to you every year, and we ask absolutely nothing from you, nothing, because we haven't had children in the school in ten years. And I have a lot of neighbors like that, too. The looming disaster is those people leave, more people with children come, and you're still stuck with the tax cap. And then you have to go over it a lot, and that becomes difficult. So I would hope that you would think a little bit of, not about the PR, about passing. See, I'm just as important as the people who send kids to school, because they let us vote. It's not only people that send children that vote, all of my neighbors vote, many of them don't have kids in the school any longer, and you have to convince them that it's in their best interest to do this. And I don't know that the board has done that, because I don't hear it, and I don't follow it a lot, I follow the enterprise. Being here is like post-traumatic stress for me, but I, I just think it's something you ought to think about. And listening to you tonight, I was surprised that this young fellow, Ben, I don't know his last name, I'm sorry, this made a lot of sense, that was sort of what I heard, that they sell us this all the time, pass, 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 and there's not enough of explaining, and you explain, I listened to Barbara, I've known her for many years, and she's very passionate about science, but when we talk to people, they're like, what am I paying for that for? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have to understand that mindset, when you're selling someone, you have to think about why it's good for them, not why it's good for you, they know it's good for you, because you're part of the board, or you work in the schools, yeah, it's good for you, but what about me? You haven't convinced me, not that I'm necessarily going to vote against this thing, but I mean, you haven't convinced me that it's good for me, or my neighbors, or all the elderly people that live in some of, like the Robin Hood streets in that area. Those streets used to be filled with children on buses, go look at the buses that come out of those streets now, there are hardly any kids on them. Those are people that are sending you money every year and not asking anything of you. They are supporting kids they don't even know, and have absolutely no self-interest in at all. They don't go to the football games, they don't do anything, but they send you money. So thank you for listening, I just thought I would bring that and hope it helps.
Thank you.
Can I ask Peter a question?
Sure. Peter, Barbara has a question for you.
You call me later.
The argument that I want to make is that if you let your buildings deteriorate, and there's no way under the tax cap, no matter how fudged you are with personnel, that you can possibly do all the construction and the repairs and stuff, that's why bond issues exist. But if you let your buildings deteriorate, in my mind, all the old folks like us that are going to be selling eventually, if you don't attract families that have kids that want to buy your house, because the schools have deteriorated, their programs have deteriorated, you're going to be sort of in the same situation as other communities, you know, be it down south or in the New York City area, that, can we use that argument?
Well, what I'm suggesting is this, I'm suggesting, instead of saying that, because I agree with you, and I would hope you find somewhere in the extra money you have around to fix the science labs, I mean, that's what I would do. And if I were on the board, I would look around for that eight-hundred, whatever you need to do it. But you're not thinking about, in my mind, you're not thinking about this the way you need to go about it, because there are a lot of people that have to fix their houses. So the roof is leaking, the house needs to be painted, the wife is driving the husband crazy, one more Thanksgiving without two ovens, she's going to shoot him, but they, but they have a certain amount of budget, so they have to fix the roof before they put the new oven in. And people make those choices all the time, and when you go and you talk to older people in the community, you often hear them say, my house is appraised for this, but it needs this, it needs this, and they don't, they're on fixed incomes, and they're not going to do it. And I think, until you can sell that person on what you're saying, because people make those choices all the time, and I know the library ran into this with a bond issue, going to put in atriums, I think, and what I heard was atriums, 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 who are going to pay for atriums? We're asking them for books, they would like an atrium in their house, but they don't have one, so why should they pay for one for the library? You have to sort of, it seems to me, you have to sell the people that disagree with you. In the old days, a while ago, in the good old days, when people were arguing about whether we should actually lock the doors in the schools, and we're worrying about having the hundred and first airborne patrol halls, the, there were a lot more people that had young children, I have a... I have a block of people that kids are getting, I, you know, you think, how did these kids get so old? They're getting married, they're doing this, they're having babies, really? But that's what's happened. And so there's an aging, there's a whole group of aging people that you need to keep on your side. It's not like the old days where you'd go in and you'd have, this place would be packed with people because there were more families that had kids. And that you'd have like, the soccer team was advocating for this, the hockey team for that, this for this, and you'd have all these people. But it's not like that anymore. And that's a bad thing in some ways, but it's a great thing in some ways, because you're getting people who give you a fair amount of tax money and don't ask anything of you. So I, things get more expensive, that's true all the time. You put off buying a new car this year, it's going to be more expensive next year. But people make those financial choices all the time, and they'd like to see, I think, this is pure speculation, I don't, this isn't anything but just speculation, they'd like to see you do that, too. So maybe you ought to look for that money to fix those labs somewhere else in the budget. Maybe that's a smart thing to do. Maybe you need to let people know that you did that. And said, you know what, we really did it, we couldn't fit it into the bond issue, so we went in the budget and we looked for money that was kicking around in the drawers, we got all our change together, and we fixed those labs for those kids, because STEM is going to be so important in the future. Instead of going, would you pay for it? You know, it's like the kid who says they want this, they want that, and the parent finally says no, and then the child goes, some children stamp their feet and scream, and some children go out and say, you know, if I rake leaves and I shovel some snow and I put the money here in three months or four months, whatever, I'll have enough money to go get what I want. But the board's inclination has always been, at least in my experience of it, well, let's have a bond issue, let's put it in the budget. And it, it was more fractious because there was no tax cap. So you'd be arguing right now about whether the tax rate should be 6% or 4%. And so it was in some ways harder, but it was some way easier, you had more choices. I understand you don't have those choices anymore. So anyway, if that helps, great. It was sort of nice being here and sort of not nice, but, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming, and thank you for the, the feedback about the two hours up front.